All right. Calling to order, the Monday, December 3rd, 2018, Planning Commission. Mr. Ruzzi, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Puentes?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Hockemary?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Wadisca?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. All right, we have no speaker series today. Do we have any petitions for those items not on the agenda? Not surprised by that. All right, we are moving right into the library variance. We have a staff report, and it looks like the applicant is here. So, you want to brief us? I know we had a work session last week.
Yeah, sure.
Just because tonight is the public meeting, we should probably
That's right.
just repeat it a little bit.
Sure. So, Kim Callahan is my colleague, and she's a project manager on the project, but I'll just briefly summarize the staff report, and then I'll defer to her presentation. I think she has a presentation tonight. City of Falls Church is proposing to renovate and expand the existing public library facility. The proposed project involves renovating the building interior and adding approximately 6,600 square feet of space to the existing building. The new building footprint requires three variances related to lot coverage and setbacks. Those are provided online. Sixty-two of your staff report, and they include a variance that allow front yard setback of 7.5 feet instead of 25 feet on Park Avenue. A second variance allow a front yard setback of 10.5 feet instead of 25 feet on North Virginia Avenue, and a third variance allow 57% lot coverage instead of the maximum allowed by code, which is 35%. The BZA will consider the application on December 13th. The proposed addition will require a site plan subject to approval by the Planning Commission if the BZA approves the request of variances on December 13th. Staff has reviewed the application and the conceptual plan, and has identified several items related to streetscape, site, and architectural design. Those recommendations are provided on page six of the staff report. The intent is to work with the applicant, the Planning Commission, the tree commission, and the AAB at site plan to address those issues and to further refine the proposed project. So with that, tonight, staff's recommendation is for the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation to approve the requested variances subject to applicant working with the staff and the Planning Commission at site plan on issues related to, one, location of curb in relation to face of the building; two, design of streetscape and parallel parking; and, three, spacing, location, and species of street trees and other plantings. With that, I'll defer to Kim Callahan for her presentations, and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm Kim Callahan. I'm the City of Falls Church Project Manager for the library renovation expansion tonight. Also here tonight is the library director, Jennifer Carroll. And we're here to ask that you recommend approval of the variances to the Board of Zoning Appeals at their December 13th meeting. We'll be there to hopefully ask that they will grant us the variances. As Akita mentioned, we're asking for three separate variances, two front yard setback variances, and one building lot coverage variance. Just to remind everybody and give a brief background on the project, in 2014, the master plan for the library was completed for the city, and they assessed the library's needs, space needs, and the growing needs of the community, and they recommended that the city expand and renovate the current facility in order to keep up with the existing needs of the community. In 2016, the voters approved an $8.7 million bond referendum to provide money to renovate and expand the library. The $8.7 million would cover the cost of approximately 6,600 square foot addition and a renovation of the existing facility. Now, the existing library was built in 1957, and since then has gone through two subsequent large-scale additions and renovations, one in 1968 and one in 1991. With both of those expansion projects, the property was granted variances on the lot coverage. It's really, this site is a challenge because it's a small site, but the land was granted to the city with a deed restriction that said that this property, the city can only use this property for library facilities. So even though the needs of the community continue to grow, and we need to expand our building, we really need to stay on this site because it can only be used by the city for public library uses. So throughout time, as the city's needs have grown, we've continued to use this site for the library. So with the current expansion, we're proposing, I think it might be easier if I use this. Can you guys see this better than the screen?
I mean, I have it electronically.
We had a big presentation last time.
Yeah, yeah. So for along North Virginia, we're moving the building towards the west, towards North Virginia Avenue, about 28 feet. The existing building is kind of the lighter shade of gray, and the proposed is outlined in the dark black. So pushing the building towards North Virginia Avenue, we still have 14 feet from the back of curb to the face of the new building. So we're proposing a six-foot planting area, and then an eight-foot wide pedestrian streetscape and maintaining the on-street parking along North Virginia Avenue. Because the property line shown here in the dark dash line is kind of inside the curb and gutter, even though we're 14 feet from the back of curb, we're still only seven feet, seven and a half feet from the property line, and we're required to provide 25 feet per the code. We're going to have a corner entrance at the corner of North Virginia and Park Avenue to make it a more prominent entrance so that you can see it coming from either direction. So our expansion onto Park Avenue is only about nine feet out, and that's really for the new stairway and the elevator to connect the two floors. We're going to get rid of that small, kind of dark interior stairway and put the stairway on the exterior to provide light. We'll have windows there to provide light to both floors of the building. So when, the existing building is only 20 and a half feet from the property line, so it's already out of compliance. So anything we did on Park Avenue, we'd need to get a variance. With the nine-foot extension, we're about 17 and a half feet from the edge of the building to the back of curb, but that only gives us about 10 and a half feet from the property line, or we're required to have 25 feet. The building lot coverage is 57%, and 35 is what's proposed. In 1991, they were granted a variance for 41.6% lot coverage. So we're increasing it from there. There is on-street parking currently shown on North Virginia Avenue and Park Avenue. It's critical, we believe, to maintain the on-street parking on Park Avenue because that's where ADA accessible parking spaces are. Now, where exactly those are going to go is still part of the discussion. Where they're shown now is just where they are currently, but we're working out the design to figure out where the best place to put those are based on the new site constraints. As we discussed at the work session last, two weeks ago, this curb bump out, we could extend that further along North Virginia Avenue to provide more space, pedestrian space at the entrance for bike racks or benches and landscaping. But if possible, we'd like to maintain some of the spaces along, the public parking spaces along North Virginia Avenue. The circulation around the site will remain the same. We're not changing any of the parking or the alleyway. We are proposing a secondary means of egress on the alleyway side. That's a code requirement so that there's enough exits from the building to, for people to move out safely. This will be designed so that it could be an entrance in the future if that works with staff and the needs of the community, but right now, we just want it to be an emergency egress. I can look, I can show you some of the elevations. The first set of images is really a perspective view from the corner of North Virginia and Park Avenue, looking at the entryway to the building. You have the steps, you have the curb bump out, you have the arch windows on the Park Avenue side. That's where the stairway will be to bring light into the building. Down below, you have a view from Park Avenue. The existing building is the gray, and the expansion is the red. Again, you can see where we're going to have the stairway. And then this brick wall, we're proposing to put the name of the library, but that's where our elevator shaft is. So it's not really possible to put windows there, but we could work with the architect on how to treat that so it doesn't seem like a blank wall. And then if we go here, this is looking along from North Virginia Avenue, looking at the building. This is the main part of the expansion. We're working, the AAB had some comments about this section where we're showing the three different arches. That's at the location where the existing entryway is, and I think they were trying to mimic the three arches that we had at the entryway, but we're working on a better solution for that. And then this bottom image is looking up North Virginia Avenue. So you see the second means of egress down at the bottom. Again, the existing building is gray, and the new building, the expansion, is in red. And then we can look at the flat elevations. This is the alleyway view. Below, you have a view from North Virginia Avenue. Again, this section of the building is still in progress, as well as the corner element. And then the view from Park Avenue, and then the view from the parking lot. So we're keeping that bow window, but really, the elevation along the parking lot is not going to change significantly. So that concludes my presentation. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question. I bought this because I wasn't here.
Yeah, I wasn't either, so.
I wasn't here last, for the work session. And I see something on there about some type of stormwater detention. I just have a question, since we're retrofitting this site, which obviously predates modern stormwater controls, it's completely impervious. What are we trying to do to ameliorate that condition with this project?
So there's currently no stormwater quantity or quality control. So what we were thinking of doing was adding a cistern to the parking lot back there, where it would collect the water from the roof drains that currently drain into the, there's a storm structure on Park Avenue in that landscaping bed. It's a yard inlet, and it goes, and it connects to a manhole in the drive aisle. And so we're thinking of putting that cistern underground to collect the water that's coming into that storm structure, and we would use that. We don't have enough, originally, the thought was to use it for landscaping purposes, but there's not enough landscaping for us to use that amount of water. But Public Works has a use for water with their, with our landscaping trucks that need to be filled up, and also with the trucks that flush out the sanitary sewer systems. They currently fill up, they use some of the water at the property yard. They have a large cistern there, but they could certainly use ours as well.
I'm understanding this is a site predates, right, modern, you know, test bay regulations. It'd be great if we could even just deal with the new, you know, building area that we're adding, the new, you know, the area where we're expanding the footprint. And I guess this will come back at site plan, and I guess we can talk about that in more detail. It would be great if we could add both quantity and quality measures to at least get close to what we're adding to the site, you know, now, in 2018, as opposed to understanding what's there before and those issues, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably my only comment on that topic. Site plan will come back to us, I guess, right?
Yes. Yeah, we'll have more detail on the stormwater management.
I understand conceptual now, right.
I like the arch windows. I like the old and the new. And I think that's really neat because it's the original, and all the windows are arched and the portico and everything.
Yes.
Yeah. Why waste money on really good windows?
A really good window. Yeah, Mr. Stevens?
I do support the extension of a bump out from the
Yes, me too.
Virginia Avenue, especially if you can add some additional bicycle racks. Because right now, it's just
Yeah. Right, okay.
So I missed the last week's work session. On the two variances, they seem pretty straightforward to me. I don't have a problem with them. The part that I was curious about is the Virginia Avenue and Park Avenue parking. I know it had been discussed before about making some adjustments so that we, if we extend those and basically lose the spaces on Virginia Avenue specifically, then you have some more pedestrian-friendly kind of walkway. It's like three or four spaces, I think, four spaces? And then potentially also extend the Park Avenue curb to lose two of the spaces so that you would maintain the ADA and then still allow a much larger setback from the curb. Was that, did that come up, and it's in the staff report?
Right.
And I had talked to Mr. Stoddard about it prior to the meeting. Did that come up last week, and what's, which the view of?
It really wasn't discussed, I guess, that, that's what Akita was pointing out in her staff report, that we all, we can address those.
It's definitely a site plan issue, agreed. I'm not, it's not, we're here tonight about the variances. It's not the deciding factor. I just want, since I missed the work session, I was curious what the conversation was around that particular issue.
There, I don't remember there being a whole lot of conversation, honestly.
There wasn't much, but we did hear some feedback from the Planning Commission.
What was the feedback?
I think the Planning Commission was friendly towards eliminating all-street parking to increase the width of the streetscape.
I'm friendly towards it, but when you just made your presentation, I heard you say that the board was interested in keeping those spots.
So we're, we understand, we're about two feet short of what the streetscape guidelines call for, for the streetscape width. We're at 14 feet, great streets call, or the streetscape standards call for 16 feet. So we could add, if we got rid of all the parking on North Virginia Avenue, we could add two feet of width to the streetscape to comply with the streetscape standards, additional two feet.
Wouldn't you, I'm sorry, wouldn't you add the full width of the spot, though? It would be a cutout for what, for bikes? How would that work?
No, it was just honestly, if
Just to meet the requirements?
We would be at 16 feet, adding another eight feet of brickwork along the streetscape would certainly add additional cost to the project.
My understanding was that it would be a mixture, like a planting sort of buffer along the street, and then a wider sidewalk. This was as presented to me, and sort of how I'm reading it in the staff report. It wouldn't be just all brickwork, it'd be
No, no, yeah, it's a, the streetscape standards call for a six-foot vegetative strip with trees, which is what we're showing, then six feet of pedestrian way, and then four feet of amenity zone in front of the building. So we're short two feet of that amenity zone in front of the building. So if we wanted to meet the streetscape requirements, we could bump the curb out two feet to meet that requirement.
Yep, I follow.
Yes.
But in your presentation, it sounded like that was not something the library board was interested in.
It sound, from talking with the library director, they'd like to keep, and, correct me if I'm wrong, they'd like to keep as many spaces as they can along street frontage. So that's why I was proposing to kind of come to a compromise and try to expand the corner so that we have more space at the entrance, but we could keep a couple of the spaces along North Virginia Avenue. But if it's the strong feeling of the staff and Planning Commission that we have to have that 16 feet, it's something we could
Let's talk about the parking in general. I don't remember where I read it in this, but it sounded like there was a huge shortage of parking. We're all familiar with the library. So currently, how many spots are you short? There's the ones, obviously, along, like, whatever, eight or nine in the back, or?
There's seven in the back.
Seven, okay, seven.
That we're short at the moment? I believe it's 42.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a big number. I know it's a really big number.
We need 64.
Sixty-four, that's what I remember reading.
If, when we renovate and expand, we would need 64 or 60?
Yeah, 64.
The zoning doesn't specifically identify a parking space per square foot like it might for other areas?
Right.
For public use, it's based on the use. So then if you go by what the library statistics are, that's how you come up with this.
So we're like 48 short.
You're 48.
Under the current structure.
No, under the, if we, when we expand.
Has the zoning administrator made that call, what the parking ratio is?
We haven't, they haven't provided a parking analysis, and we haven't done one yet. We are waiting for, because there's definitely a parking reduction request at that site plan, and we'll need a TDM to go with that, but we haven't done it.
Because if the use isn't listed specifically, then the zoning administrator kind of makes an interpretation around what, how to apply the rate.
We were assuming one per 400 square feet.
I think that was the ratio that we were.
Okay.
So that means we'd need about 64 spaces. And we have, with the on-street, dedicated on-street parking and the parking in the back, we have about 17 spaces, so we're 48 short.
Question, I mean, the two-hour library patron-only parking, are we enforcing that? I mean, is that, I mean, have we found compliance with that? Voluntary compliance, is the public generally respecting that sign? Or are people going there and running in to get barbecue?
Yeah, I can't answer that.
I know, it's a question maybe for library folks, but, I mean, it's a good intention to have that sign, I don't know how well we enforce it. Are we counting that as a spot? I guess we should count it, but I don't know how well it gets enforced or not. But anyhow, we're doing the best we can. It's an urban site now, and I recognize that.
Yeah, so that's my view as well, it's an urban site. So right now, you're short, even without the expansion, and people are parking on the street, for sure. And then on the side by Cherry Hill Park.
Yes, and they also park down Park Avenue on the opposite side. They also park, there are some people who park in the Broaddale Parking Center.
Not for long.
Who then get towed. There are also people who park in the 313 Medical Center, which also has posted that they will be towed. Currently, they're, they're not towing at the moment.
Put Broaddale, oh my gosh.
I park in my house a lot.
There are people who walk, but we have a large population about, we have 30,000 cardholders, about 11,000 are cities, citizens. So the rest are coming from Fairfax, Arlington, and some even from Alexandria. So we do have a large population that I think is driving and parking and using the library.
I know that at one time, the city manager was working on possibility of renting spaces over there at the medical building. I don't know if anything's come of that. You know, we just had the whole good fortune of getting 10 spaces at Park Towers for parking down there. So that was really good collaboration of Park Towers and businesses and city.
Yeah, we've got a draft agreement written up to rent spaces in that adjacent lot. It's just a matter of getting it approved with the property. So it's in progress, but nothing has been finalized.
Yeah, and they've been very generous, of course, with Saturdays. And, you know, so, you know, it's, it's very nice. I wish we could have some sort of incentive to businesses to share parking, you know. But I always mention stormwater, and everybody said, "Oh," you know, or something. I just wish we had an incentive to have more shared parking throughout the city.
Which is not to provide the parking.
Yeah.
Has parking been an issue? I mean, it doesn't seem like this is a, if this is a big concern?
I would say we hear it a lot from patrons. It usually does happen at peak times, so when story hour is happening, when court is in session and
Oh, yeah.
City Hall, and something else is going on, then there's reduced parking availability. I've heard from seniors who have difficulty finding spaces. They would prefer to park closer to the library because they have difficulty navigating. So they've been upset when they can't park, I think, within a block or two, and rightly so. And people with mobility issues, so we do hear from patrons about the parking a lot. The lack of parking is what we hear about.
Is there an ADA issue with the amount of spaces we need to have alive?
We have two ADA
That's a legitimate concern, if folks can get there, but there's two spots.
We have two spots, yep, that are right on Park Avenue. That are up that direction.
So we're working out exactly where those need to be.
The two that are there now?
Yes.
I did notice from the January 18th, 1968 memo, the city manager
Mimio graph, I think.
said that they'd get off-street parking eventually would be provided, so. We should just have the city manager say that this time.
It's just the time.
Eventually, it hasn't passed yet, right? It's still possible.
We've also, we've also talked about on the North Virginia side, if we move that bump out a little bit, and maybe also bump out at the other end at the alley, and then made, I don't know how many spaces would fit in there, then maybe two or three, that those be short-term parking spaces, so like 20 minutes or less so that, you know, people who want to just drop off books, pick stuff up, drop off kids, drop off, you know, elderly, drop off anybody, really, could do that, and those would have a high turnover rate.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that makes sense anyway. But I'm, I want to be sensitive to your concerns about the parking. You guys have to operate it and make it all work from a logistical standpoint. My tendency is to focus more on the pedestrian activation. That's my personal position on it, especially along Park. You needed two ADA spaces, for sure. But I think that where we're heading with this street as one of the great streets, I think that it would be unfortunate to have a substandard sidewalk on a street where we're going to try to bring people in and allow them to move. So on that, again, that's not what we're deciding tonight, but my original thought here is that to reduce the spaces, certainly on Park, and then maybe we deal with the bump out or something, lose a space potentially on Northern, Northern Virginia, North Virginia, not Northern, to accommodate some more bike racks and things like that. Another thing that I think is very important, if there's currently, where is the bike parking planned on, just in that one spot?
We hadn't gotten to that level of detail.
No, I know, that's site plan, I get you.
But when I was talking about expanding the curb out this way, that is where I was envisioning the bike parking could go.
Okay. All right, I don't know if anybody has any other additional opinions on this. This is, again, not this evening's issue.
This is site plan too, but, and everyone knows it's my pet thing, but one way to help reduce the impact of a narrower than desired sidewalk is to not have raised tree beds, which I understand murders the trees, but I see lots of trees that survive it, so I think we could probably figure it out. So like along North Virginia, where we only have seven, eight feet of sidewalk, if those weren't raised, then you'd have a much better chance of strollers passing each other, and there are going to be a lot of strollers. And then the other thing, which came out last time, which got poo-pooed, but I went and looked, you know, if you can move, get, if we're moving telephone poles anyway, I do think that pole can go on the other side of Park. There are some trees there now that will be torn down when they, when they build a new house there in the corner, so it won't be there when it comes time to move the thing. So I urge whoever is involved to at least consider getting the wires on the other side of Park, at least for that half block in front of the library. I don't think it would be impossible. But I'm not an electrical guy, so. Because having a pole either in the middle or in the edge of that sidewalk is also
Yeah, underground. Yeah, it's a money thing, but here, you're doing all kinds of work there. It's crazy not to do it, you know?
Well, I think you said that the hope was to at least move the pole from the middle of the sidewalk to the edge, so if you're moving it, just move it across the street.
So my concern is about the parking, but tonight's is, the meeting is about the variance. I was not at the work session. I don't know if everybody answered all their questions. Everybody's good on that, and we're ready to move on the variances. Does anybody have any issues that they want to address about the variance part of it? Okay, all right. Does anybody have any comments about anything else on this proposal?
I think the design has come such a long way since the first thing I saw.
Yeah, I think it looks really good. My concern is just about the parking. Okay, well, I think we need to take an action on this to approve these variances.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
We ready for a motion?
Yep. Go for it.
Thank you, before I make the motion, I'll also comment that, I think we last, the first time I saw this was at least a year and a, maybe a year ago? Maybe a little more than that, back when, you know, and it has come a long way. And even the variance justification, which I think I remember commenting on the first time it came here, has come a long way. The staff report is very well done, so kudos to staff. And, and even the variance justification, which I think I remember commenting on the first time it came here, has come a long way, the staff report is very well done, so kudos to staff. Um, it does a great job of laying out the, uh, issues for the variance, as I said, I think at the first time we heard it, when the city's asking itself for a variance, we're basically saying we don't wanna follow our own ordinance, our own rules, we should have a pretty good justification. And I think we do, um, I think the argument about the fact that the site is undersized, the fact that it has that unusual deed restriction, the fact that the building's existing non-conforming, uh, and the other hurdles and challenges that have already been discussed, I won't read everything in the memo, but it's well done. And I think the BZA should feel good that hopefully they agree that it also meets the standards and they can grant the variance. Um, so anyhow, with that, uh, so in application, uh, variance, application V one six oh six dash one eight by the City of Falls Church, four variances. To section, uh, four eight dash eleven oh one to allow a front yard setback of seven and a half feet instead of twenty-five feet on North Virginia Avenue, a front yard setback of ten and a half feet instead of twenty-five feet on Park Avenue. And a maximum lot coverage of fifty-seven percent instead of thirty-five percent for the purpose of renovating the existing public library and constructing a two-story addition on premises known as one hundred and twenty North Virginia Avenue. RPC number five one dash one thirteen dash zero zero five of the Falls Church real property records zoned OD official design. I moved, uh, that the planning commission recommend approval of variance application V six one oh six dash one eight to the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, at their hearing, uh, on December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Subject to the applicant working with staff and the planning commission at the site plan phase on the following issues related to site design. Uh, I'll press the pause button, I assume these three things in the motion are things that were discussed at the work session, so if anyone wants to chime in, feel free, but, uh, location, all right, unpause. Location of curb in relation to the face of building, the design of the streetscape and parallel parking, uh, space, spacing, location and species of street trees and other plantings. And I would also add a number four, uh, stormwater, uh, detention and best management practice, uh, as well.
I'll second it. Good job.
Any discussion about the motion? Anybody wanna talk about the stormwater that you just tried to slide in there at that last second?
Well, that was.
Well, I'm not saying we need.
No, I just, I just give you, uh, all right.
What you talking about?
Can you take the roll? I think we don't have any discussions, take the roll call vote.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes, sorry, thank you.
Quick question, what is the timeline for when we are going to construction? When, when are you gonna do anything?
Site plan.
Uh, we would like to start construction September of two thousand and nineteen and it'll take about fourteen months to construct, so you're looking at the end of two thousand twenty?
Just what I'd ask. So you're moving, you're shutting everything down?
We're working with the schools on an MOU to use the TJ trailers for a temporary library, uh, so I know that Jenny has her staff, um, meeting and packing and.
Oh. That'd be an interesting. That'd be an interesting.
Second grade.
Sharing, last time we put it, uh, for those of you that weren't around, we put everything in the CVS down there, uh, cause it was empty.
Yes.
And everybody went and carried boxes of books down the street, you can talk to Tom Clitten about that, I've heard great stories.
But the thought was that we could occupy the trailers once school's over, uh, beginning of July.
Seriously, and it, get them now while they got them?
All right, well, congratulations, get your variance from us at least, our recommendation. All right, let's move on to the intellectual disability zoning update.
Also heard this last week.
Yeah, I, uh, I also missed this, this is a quick one, I can't imagine there was that much discussion, though I think we got some new. Was there a lot of discussion? No, it looked pretty self-explanatory.
No, nothing.
Mostly like, uh.
Nothing.
Should have been a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, there was, I think these, uh, the Human Services Advisory Council, I think added some additional updates, which is.
Catching up with the world.
I feel like new since, uh, our meeting, cause I didn't see this prior.
It is new, they had comments and we've attached it to the current staff.
We've atta- we've included these in the current staff.
Yes.
Well, I don't know that they suggested changes, it just sounded like, we're not sure what this means.
Yeah, this is not clear, I'm looking at it here, uh, all right, so let's, again, a public meeting, so let's get a quick staff report.
Exactly, yeah. Sure.
And I wanna make sure we open it up to the public, which I think I forgot to do on the library stuff.
Such as life.
Yeah.
There was no speaker slips.
There was no speaker slips, but this time I'll remember on this one.
Um, so I'll just briefly highlight, uh, staff report, that's before you tonight, uh, the council's considering amendments to several sections of DECODE to update language referring to persons with disabilities. Um, again, this is a simply an update to, that replaces outdated language in DECODE, um, with the new state terminology, there's really no functional change to the zoning code. Um, the council at their public meeting on November thirteenth granted, uh, uh, first reading and referred item to the planning commission, um, and they've scheduled a second reading and a final approval of this item for December tenth. Uh, with that, the, uh, staff recommends approval or recommend, a positive recommendation to the council to approve the proposed amendment, or we've looked at it and we don't see any red flags at this time.
Great, uh, before we discuss it, uh, let me open to the public, anybody have anything they'd like to add on this issue? All right, seeing none, I'm closing it to the public, uh, all right, commissioners, do we have any comments we want to add to this one? We worked them all out two weeks ago.
Long we're doing, it needs to get done, we need to clean up language on a lot of things.
Okay, I like the efficiency on this issue, I couldn't agree more. Can I get a motion to? Make these adjustments?
Although we recommend, recommend approval of TO eighteen dash oh nine for public hearing in action by city council on December tenth twenty-two.
A second.
Uh, any discussion? All right, great, let's, uh, take a roll call vote again.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are all in agreement on everything tonight.
It's like the easiest agenda we've ever had.
Yeah.
See what happens when Paul's not here.
I hope everybody heard that.
Uh, all right, planning commissioner reports, does anybody have anything they'd like to report on?
Oh, I just want, I wanna just, for informational purposes, say that, uh, the Lasso, that's, hi. Um, that is part of the, uh, high school, uh, it's a hard copy magazine and they did articles on the new school, they did articles on, uh, Founder's Road, the new development up at the school site, the library. And so the kids have been really, really involved in it and three of those articles were done by, uh, student representatives to different boards and commissions, which is really good. And so they've really, and new restaurants versus old restaurants, what's gone and what's new, they have really been delving into stuff going on in the city, which I think is fantastic. And then I understand that another class, they took, uh, different parts of the new school and presented pros and cons on it, you know, to the rest of the classes and things like that. So they're really getting involved and I think that's a great opportunity and I hope that perhaps we can get them, I know last year, the, the, um, kids that are working in CAD designs. Did some designs for the outside, for the, outside of the, uh, new school, for the patio and the gathering areas. But I do hope that we can get perhaps some, some visitations for the different classes up at the school from the developers and things to perk their interest in, you know, a wonderful career. You know, they can be part of it, but anyways, fantastic, and I meant to bring one for everybody, sorry.
Yes, sir. It's fantastic.
Any other reports?
I'll, I'll just mention that, uh, at the EDA meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow.
Yes.
They're going to have representatives from EYA come give, uh, presentation and discussion on the new ten acre development proposal. I know Mr. Chair, you were at the campus coordinating committee where they, something probably is gonna be similar, but if anyone, you know, wants to hear more about that, that, uh, me and Tom Knight, it's at the, uh, high school, it's in high school, their library at, uh, seven o'clock.
Yep.
But I plan on bringing a whole lot of those tomorrow night, you know, for the, particularly since Evan wrote two of those, he's one of our guys.
Any other reports? All right, well, I'll just briefly mention this campus coordinating committee, we, uh, met on Fri- this past Friday, uh, we heard a presentation from EYA, PN Hoffman, uh, and Regency. For those who haven't heard that presentation before, uh, I've seen a little bit of it when, when involved with the, the committee. Uh, I thought they did a really nice job of showing us options, um, that, uh, and their thoughts and the considerations that went into the design. Uh, believe they're gonna make this same presentation or something very, very similar, uh, to us at our next, uh, meeting. There's a really tight timeframe, it doesn't, may not seem that tight, but they're really trying to get the, uh, the. They're, they're at an interim agreement and they're trying to get a more, uh, I can't remember the word right off the top of my head, but a concrete agreement, that's not the word, uh, in May. A, uh, and so a lot of things have to line up to make that happen, uh, I know that the terms of the deal are mostly, uh, understood, but there are a lot of different elements. Uh, and there are some actions that have to happen by the planning commission to make that happen, which is what we're gonna talk about on, in two weeks. So we have our work, uh, cut out for us, but it's not, you know, overly difficult work, I don't think there's gonna be much disagreement, these are just steps that have to occur, actions we have to take to make sure this could happen. But what's really exciting is in addition to hearing about the economic development there, uh, in attendance at the meeting is a very full house, was also, uh, many of the representatives from the Gilbane, Stan Tech, Quinn Evans team. And so, uh, while, uh, the EYA Hoffman Regency team has not been officially contracted, um, they have a, you know, interim agreement and that communication can begin to happen. There was a lot, there's been a lot of questions, we heard it at our last presentation where they were unsure about what was happening, now, uh, some of those questions have gotten answered for them, but also the communication in those channels are now gonna begin to, to, to be open to each other. And I think that'll make for a much, much better project and the timing is good because they're starting to come towards the end on the high school, uh, but there's still some questions, especially related to parking, we heard that even from our presentation here, that, uh. What we didn't know two weeks ago is that, you know, there's some proposal for a, really a shared parking garage, there's a lot of elements about that still need to be worked out.
Yeah.
Um, uh, legalities associated with them being the primary one, uh, and I know the city attorney's been working on that for months and months and months, cause it was questions that we, uh, the committee had. But, uh, EYA, I'm just gonna call them EYA for shorthand, they have a proposal for one that puts a shared parking garage on the school grounds. Uh, so it's like a four-story, uh, above-grade parking structure where a certain number of spaces are owned or controlled by the school, which would allow it to, to be considered a school use. And then the rest of it would be for the, the economic development. But if that does not meet the requirements, uh, they have in the secondary plan that says we're gonna take that garage off that spot, we'll see mostly what we saw from the presentation two weeks ago. And they would keep within this like really tight designated ten acres, so they have a solution, this, this is not a, um, a deal breaker. Uh, but we can, we can, I think, if we can find a legal way to make this parking lot or this parking structure, uh, work on the school site, I think it's better for the project. Um, I think it's beneficial for the entire flow of the site, I think it's better for us economically as a city, uh, and I think it would also actually help for, with the schools and make it very easy for this overflow parking and some of the, the surge parking that we talked about last week. So I, I'm hopeful the city can come up with a, a resolution, um, and talking with Fairfax County, make sure that everybody's okay with it. Uh, I do think it meets the requirements, I think these parking spaces are school parking spaces, uh, not economic development, just happens to be in the same structure. So I think there's a really solid legal argument to be made, um, but we'll get a full presentation on that, uh, in two weeks. So, uh, that committee, while we've been doing it for well over a year now, uh, the real work I think is gonna start to begin for that committee, a lot of it's just been, you know, give us updates on storm sewer and things like that. Now I think some decisions are gonna have to be made and, and, uh, digging into how those two sites interact. But, uh, we have been well advised as a city at every stage of this process and, uh, I don't expect anything to change on that front. Uh, Tim, you were there, uh, you have anything to add to that report?
No, um, it was interesting, having seen their, their display for the first time, at least from myself, uh, it seemed to reflect some good, solid thinking on their part. And obviously, EYA is a very experienced organization and seems like we were getting the benefit right out of the gate of that experience with the, some of the design elements that they had for the ten acres, uh, commercial. And my hope is that as that progresses and people get more attached to the possibilities of what could be there, that that project becomes not just a big bang to fund the high school, but rather a place in and of itself that we all kind of look forward to going to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually really excited for everybody to see the presentation on the seventeenth, uh, again, I've been a very, very involved with it for the last, uh, I don't even know, year. And, uh, it's, I'm looking forward to the, the discussion from the residents of the city and from the planning commission and the community as a whole. Cause I think it was thoughtful, I know what I was comparing it to, um, and I thought the way they approached the placemaking was really well done and again thoughtful, doesn't mean there can't be some small tweaks to it. And the thing that I thought was really exciting, uh, again, we got more, more in the detail on the final, you know, two, but the thing that I really liked about EYA's proposal is their understanding about phase one. It's broken into two phases and phase one, I don't have the square footage or, or, you know, memorized, but it's overwhelmingly developing the site. There's, there's some small buildings, some condo and some office space potentially, there's some, you know, ver- uh, flexibility in, in the out years. But I wish I had a better percentage, but let's just say eighty percent of the entire site is gonna be developed in one shot and the idea there being that unless you do that right up front and, and work hard to create a place. That it's just sort of piecemeal and it never gets its momentum and it's hard to lease it out, it just feels really, like a site just perpetually in construction. Here they're just gonna, in, the way they're presenting it, they're just gonna go for it, um, phase one is gonna be massive and create this place, the construction will be by and large done in a couple of years. And then any remaining construction is gonna be at the sort of far reaches of the property away from the, the high school, so it won't be constantly in a state of construction. And the thought of putting in whatever the number of square feet it was, which was enormous, all at once, um, anchored by a huge grocer, uh, uh, it just, it just seems like it's gonna be wonderful to, for the city. And, and what we just dealt with on the committee, uh, is the ten acres, and so that was our entire purview, that's all we thought about. But they have proposals in to deal with the Virginia Tech, uh, uh, University of Virginia site and they put in a proposal, so has Rushmark, they're the two finalists, just like on our, uh, ten acres. And if they are to win that award, uh, and that's in flux too, that I, I would've said, uh, a month ago, that the chance of that moving forward was much, much higher than it is now that Amazon has come and they're really now focused on the, uh, what's happening in the Crystal City Alexandria location. But it just makes sense here, but if they were to win that as well, the synergy between those two sites, they've already thought that through, they've already thought through the development of the whole site. I will say so had Rushmark when, in their proposal, and so if, uh, Virginia Tech decides that they wanna go ahead and use Rushmark, I still think we're gonna get a wonderful development of that whole area. I don't have a firm op- an opinion either way.
Amazon connection?
They're, they're.
City developers and.
No, they, Virginia Tech.
They're trying to deal with Virginia Tech to build like a million square feet of, of.
Right, but it's Fairfax, wouldn't it be Fairfax County dealing with the developer, not the, not the, not the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the question is.
Yeah, no, it's weird with Virginia Tech, wanna invest in this property when they got so much going on out there.
Will Virginia Tech wanna do anything here?
Yeah.
Or maybe they'll give up on the site.
And maybe, you know, maybe we could buy it.
They might. All, all of these, all of these things are.
Yeah, we have to buy it.
Yes, we'd have to pay for the building, we have, own the land, but when it goes over, uh, you have to buy out their option.
You mean to buy out their option?
What a ridiculous contract that is.
I know, it's miserable, that was.
Did you ask them to develop the West Falls Church station, site, parking lot there?
Yeah.
Uh.
The subway stations, that's still.
Yeah, that's farther out. Yeah, that's farther out, I think.
Yeah, that's, we're we're a few years ahead of Womata and uh Virginia Tech. I mean, they're they're moving at a different pace than us.
Very slow.
And we're just ahead, I mean, we're just ahead in terms of when we started. But uh my sense, at least, you know, this is based on nothing other than just my feel and the conversations, again, pre-Amazon arriving, was that Virginia Tech was very much open to developing this and making a corridor that points right towards the metro or near nearly to it. And if you can activate, uh this was from the presentation on Friday, if you include the Virginia Tech area and our ten acres, I think it came to something like thirty-five acres or so and it now becomes like the size of Mosaic. And we don't control all that, but in terms of what it feels like, how it operates, they have this sort of central street or central area going down our ten acres and that would just continue all the way down, you know, basically guide you to the metro. It would be really uh transformational.
We might be able to work a deal with the developer to help buy out that option.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, where we don't do it, but the developer does and and then we give them a certain amount of lease on that.
Yeah.
Which might be a more useful lease than the current lease we have.
Oh, that would help.
I mean, we, the committee itself spent a tremendous amount of time on the financial sides of it. But as far as like I'm just saying, from a planning commission standpoint, uh the way they approached making a place there felt thought out, considered and was, I thought exemplary. I thought it's really gonna make a nice spot.
Thank you so much for representing us and putting in all that time.
My pleasure. It was a lot of time, but I do think.
Fascinating.
It was uh fun to be a part of it. It was really fun. Um alright, let's uh, thank you for letting me just speak about it. I've been waiting to talk to people about the project. Uh alright, the planning directors' report.
Um we only have one thing on there and it's good news. Um we had two recently constructed projects in the City of Falls Church receive uh awards from uh NIA. And uh there is some write-up attached to your director's report. It talks about the project and the submission um and the narrative. Uh but the Lincoln at Tanner Hill rece- received an award of excellence in the category of mixed-use project in a single building. And the North Side Social Project received an award of merit in the category of adaptive reuse. And then I I I think the news press is also attached there that talks about those projects. That's the only thing in the director's report.
Okay, um so we are essentially correspondence. Um I'm not sure exactly what we're talking about. I feel like it was this uh letter that went, that was, that went out to, on the Affordable Living Policy. And um again, I stepped out for that forty-five minutes and missed that key conversation. There are unfortunately numerous typographical errors in this report. So I wanted to know what, can someone just bring me up to speed on like the discussion, just a quick summary of what was discussed, cause it sounds like there was some editing of this letter.
You took about our letter back to them about the.
Yeah, correct. I mean, it's it's, I I think that's the item we're talking about on correspondence. We we did it. It was done. Um it it had uh it needs, I I think I need to resubmit it. It had lots of typographical errors and um that's problematic for me in terms of just uh putting my name on it. I don't want something to go to city council, so I'd I'd like to resend it. I I will be just changing the words, the the wording in terms of the um the errors.
There were some things that were rewritten.
Yeah, what, can we talk, can we talk about that uh? What would, what the, what was the conversation around it? Cause I, it it went through a couple iterations, so I just wanna sumar. I don't need to re-litigate the whole thing, but um.
Drop the accessory development.
Right. We dropped that part.
Drop the part about the number, they're calling it the top minority versus, or the top one or two versus having, I don't know, was that the name, the rest of it?
Yeah, and special exception only allowing two issues.
Yes.
Right, right. That was.
That was so, that was softened.
Yeah, that was too restrictive.
That's where there's probably some.
No, there, I mean, the typographical errors are everywhere, but that's not what I'm worried about. Yeah, I'm I'm curious about the substance. I'm gonna reissue it just based on the typographical stuff.
No.
I don't know.
Who who did the actual edit?
I don't know, but who did the edits? We were, we weren't typing it in class, we were in class or.
I wrote some.
I think we each wrote every other word.
Twenty monkeys and twenty typewriters.
Alright, well, I see that you softened it a bit, which is um, I'm pleased to see that. Alright, well, I'm gonna reissue it. I'm not gonna try to change much of the text here, but it just, I just wanna make sure that when it goes to council, it uh shows us.
Did we misspell your name again? Sorry.
You didn't, but we're called the Panning Commission, by the way.
That was on purpose.
We do pan a lot of things.
Well, you know, September G is out, so who knows who did it.
Can we change it to the, to the Painting Commission?
Alright, um I just wanna let you know it's gonna have a new date. I'm just gonna make some uh minor edits to it, so that's it. Uh alright, work session, there's none and I think unless anybody.
We should drag our feet till eight forty-five?
No, we do not. Um.
Do we have an agenda for that too, like the?
We do.
I don't, I don't have one.
I mean, we don't have a formal agenda, but I can share with you.
The 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 agenda that was.
Paul and I talked about it.
Agenda that was actually online, had a link to the agenda, which is another document, it's a little strange, but it had this little chart for upcoming things.
Oh, okay, so.
December seventeenth work session, West Falls Economic Project.
Alright, I, Paul and I have been emailing a bunch about this meeting. Um so what we're gonna try to do is uh we definitely have a a long presentation from EYA from seven thirty to nine o'clock. I mean, we'll work out the details, Paul and I, but there's also a survey that he would like input from us about how this past year has gone. There's been some bunch of changes until, in terms of how staff reports have been um given to us and he had, he's, he's uh curious about getting feedback on where is my feedback? Just so you can start thinking about it. Here's the survey.
Well, I think things have gone really, really well. I just think it's been tightened up and uh, you know, looking forward and.
If we're skyplank, we should get snacks.
You know, if we, if we get ourselves into gear, but I mean, seriously, I think that from staff, it's just been wonderful.
Yeah, it it has and you're gonna get a chance to fill out a survey, but we're, he wants to talk about um the staff reports and package materials. Were they informative, engaging or timely? Uh the agendas, were they click, were, were they, was there clarity about the items? Uh meeting management and then uh how we did on sort of the overall work, long-range planning, project review, and then the speaker series, how that went. So he's gonna present it, he's gonna tee it up, he's gonna ask the questions, but he is looking for some feedback so we can continue to improve. Uh we also.
We just give him gold stars.
I told him I did a great job. Um the team, the staff, the whole staff, uh but I'm really pleased with the changes they made. And the other is, I wanna go over the rules of procedure. That is typically a uh first week of January, or first meeting in January activity. But I was going through it uh like two weeks ago. It was something I wanted to look up on the rules of procedure. And they are an antiquated document. Um so while we would officially adopt it in the first of the year, I think we have some time and I would like to come prepared to that January meeting and there are, if there are twenty sections in that rules of procedure, uh eighteen need to be rewritten or eliminated.
Is that a work session next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, so it it, we haven't got it ready yet, but this is something that I think is worth some time. Well, I, at this point, the EYA presentation's seven thirty to nine o'clock. Uh these are guidelines and then this, the.
Go three hours after that.
But but I think we should be looking at, the the conversation about the rules and procedures should need not be so long, but just to sort of point out, begin to think about this so that conversa- you're not looking at it on the first uh or the third or whatever the meeting is.
Could.
Of uh January and not prepared to.
Can we include it in the packet that'll go out a week or so in advance?
Yeah, of of, for sure. It's just such, it's such a.
I remember looking at it last year and thinking like.
It's ponderous.
It is, it is. So that's all. So that's why you asked if there's an agenda. I think there's. We will be meeting on the seventeenth for sure and you get to hear the EYA presentation and ask all the questions you want, uh so on its own, that's interesting. Alright, let's adjourn.